The May seventeen twenty twenty one special meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Uh, we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart. Face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines for our communications. Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines for our communications.
I don't see that, Ian.
All right, um, we're not gonna wait. Pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three, the public shall directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting. Uh, Mr. NRMC Attorney?
Yes.
Um, there's a, there might be some technical difficulties coming from the city clerk's office. Um, can we enter any oral, can we open up it for oral communication once, uh, city clerk's office comes online? Or do we need to wait?
No, we could wait, we could, um, well, we should actually wait because they, somebody may have comments on specific things on the agenda.
Okay.
The Chair, let me, uh, see what the issue is, I'll respond back in a second, thank you.
Um, and Vaughn, if you could find out if there's any communications so that we can, and if there's not, then we could just move on, right?
Okay, checking right now, thank you.
Right, thanks.
They're just logging in right now.
Okay. Hi, Diana, can you unmute yourself? We can see you. Diana, do we have any, any communications from the public?
We don't.
We don't? Okay, that's all we needed to hear from you, so I think, uh, if you just keep your camera on, just in case we ask you something else of you, okay?
All right.
All right, thanks. Uh, so there's no communications? If not, I'll declare our communications close ordered. I don't know before, council study session regarding the development of the Hawthorne Mall site located at one two one six two Hawthorne Boulevard. Uh, we're discussing this with the city's consultant, uh, Christopher Beck of Newmark, Knight and Frank. Uh, Mr., okay, and so I'd just like to, um, just wanted to set up some, some general guidelines, individual council members, members in the public, um, have approached me and they'd like to see them, you know, the meetings kind of run a little bit more efficiently. Um, everybody gets to ask questions, um, so we'd like to maybe, uh, hear from, structure it a bit better so that we, everybody on the city council gets to, um, ask a question or two. Um, so we like to limit each individual's turn around the first turn, um, to two questions. And, uh, once we go around, there's a possibility that the question you may have, uh, wanted to ask will get answered, okay? Okay, thank you, uh, city council. Okay, Mr. Beck, can you go ahead and, uh, introduce the subject, please?
Sure, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, um, and staff and others that are here. Um, I believe our last meeting was April twenty second, um, and the goal of that meeting was for myself and staff to work directly with the property owner, um, to provide some guidance and some direction as it relates to, uh, the future plans of the Hawthorne Mall, um, the redevelopment, whatnot, um, for our May nineteenth, um, meeting. Um, we did do that, we met on, um, I believe it was April twenty sixth in a very positive working session, um, with the Charles Company, um, where, um, there was essentially a two-pronged discussion, one being, uh, the general plan and how there may be opportunities to, uh, from the Charles Company's perspective, um, you know, work in modifying some of that specific plan, um, sure that a more specific use could be utilized for the site, um, in addition to discussions as to a general, very general, um, vision of the council in terms of the future use there. I say general because there was nothing specifically dictated or determined during that time, but was, but what was determined was some general specific parameters, so we met with them on the twenty sixth. Um, I know that they've been working hard and diligently and in following those, those, that guidance. Um, Melissa and I, um, met with them prior to the council meeting today, um, at two o'clock for an hour, just to confirm that they are on path for the meeting on the nineteenth. Um, and expect on the nineteenth there to be, um, some progress, uh, I feel that there was some progress done, again, um, from a general perspective, they, 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 they hear, uh, the guidance being provided. Uh, there are some, some hurdles that need to be achieved, um, to get to where that needs to be from a, from a perspective for the council, um, and whatnot to get what it's looking for, which is redevelopment of that site. I'd ask if Melissa would be kind enough to, to hop into, into this and, and give her a synopsis of, and Greg for that matter as well, her synopsis of how the meeting went today and, um, my general overview over the last sort of several weeks of, of what's transpired.
Thank you, Mr. Beck, so we did have a meeting with them, I also had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, May tenth, where I had a conversation with, um, their land use attorney, and we talked a little bit more specifically about what they're looking for, the different, the, the changes, the language that could be proposed. Um, so my understanding now is that on Wednesday, they're going to bring back to us kind of a summary of everything that they've learned, everything that they've heard from you, that they're going to take with them, uh, moving forward, for whatever applications they may be bringing forth, which could be zone text amendments, likely zone text amendments and amendments to the specific plan, so it, it sounds like, uh, well, we, I, I, I think we had very productive discussions, um, and it, it will po- possibly be culminating in Wednesday's presentation, um, to us, to, to you, to the city council. So, um, I think we're all, we're looking forward to that and we, we hope that, we, we do believe that they have, um, understood a lot of what, um, the council's been saying that they want to see and what they don't want to see, um, and they will be ready to talk about that. Um, not necessarily with some language, um, but with proposals, um, and a summary of what it is that they want to do.
I think that's, that's right, and, and to just sort of piggyback on, on Melissa's comments, that would be on, on the design side would be more of an overlay description, a general description of what could go there, nothing in terms of specific allocation of percentages for the various smorgasbord of uses, and I keep using that term, but that's what we discussed in our, in our meeting on the twenty second, um, that us being, uh, the collective group with the council. Um, so that was my interpretation of what Melissa just articulated on that side, and as it relates to the overall specific, uh, development, there won't be uh, anything articulated to the point of how many exact units and how much office or how much retail, but more of a general overlay concept to demonstrate, um, that they, they have, um, learned, absorbed and processed and are moving in the direction of, of what, uh, the council would envision, um, on behalf of constituents.
Alright, okay, so I have questions, hands are up. Okay, council member Montero. And then council member Pat, and then council member Patterson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, thank you for that summary of you guys' meeting. Uh, can, um, maybe you guys can clarify it for me because I was on the impression, uh, that you, uh, the meeting was going to be for them to tell you guys what they wanted about to, to modify or the downtown specific plan and also what they were talking about, about zoning changes, so I wanted it was for, for you guys to come up with some type of, uh, almost to tell us what exactly they wanted. When they mentioned on that meeting that they wanted that downtown specific land to be amended and also the zoning, so I, I, I was on the impression that today we were going to get those, uh, outcomes that between our planning department and our land use, Melissa attorney, and their people were going to, you guys were going to have the meeting together and then they're gonna tell you what they were specifically in mind about that downtown specific plan they want to change and also the zoning. So, so us to be able to go to that meeting, uh, next week, uh, to give them a yes or no on their proposal plan changing. Not, not about overlay concept or, or how many units, no, it was about the downtown specific plan and the specific zoning because they mentioned that they want the zoning, some type of zoning changing, they wanted the downtown specific plan to be, uh, revamped or rechanged, so that was my intention to force to have some concrete stuff from them today.
I, I can answer that question, um, so I did have a conversation with them again on May tenth, and that's what I requested is to get language, propose language so that we can understand exactly what it is that they were looking for. So they were hopeful in trying to get that prepared, um, and they were not able to. Um, so what they're going to have is a summary of the language that they want to have and have as changes in the specific plan and the, and the zone text amendment, but your understanding is correct, um, council member Montero, that, that's what, um, we were looking to get and Greg and I were going to be available to review the language and, and talk through it, but it, it, it was not provided to us.
So, so that's mean, uh, they use, uh, uh, because when I asked the lawyers and, and the land use people the last time they were here, the Charles Company, I have specific said that you guys were going to work on those, so for us to get an idea of what they wanted. So that's mean they, they use, they just wasted another almost three, three weeks, almost four weeks, and didn't give us what they want to change because that's what my plan was to have that meeting next week with an, an idea if in fact we had what they wanted to change, so we can, we can, you know, debate that issue with them face to face, so now they're gonna come with another summary of, uh, yeah, we want this change, we want that change, and then we cannot respond.
Right, so my understanding is the next meeting is on Wednesday, um, the nineteenth, so, um, at that time, they will provide something more than what they provided last time, which was very general, um, but my understanding is that they wouldn't have a language. I, I believe that once they started to look into the code and to look into the specific plan, it became a bit more of a task, much more involved than they had anticipated, um, and so they want to have, they, they know they have to have that proposed at some point, but they're looking at, as doing that as something in the future. Moving forward, an application is actually submitted to the city, that's my understanding, but, um, that's a good question to ask them on, on Wednesday, how far along they got perhaps, and if they're willing to share at least as far as they got. Um, but yes, that, that's correct, council member Montero, that's what we were looking to get.
Thank you, I'll wait, I use my two questions.
No, thank you, sir, council member Patterson?
Uh, yes, sir, so just confirming, we, we had requested that they, um, that they submit their specific recommendations for zone, our zone tech amendments or, or, or a specific plan and changes. Uh, they had said that they needed those things to be changed, we said, hey, what would you like for us to change it to? And then essentially, they're like, oh, we're not, weren't really prepared to give you that information yet. They just knew they needed to be changed, or they know specifically, they, they, they was, they didn't know specifically what changes they wanted made yet. And so now we're still waiting for them to provide us with those requests, so, okay, and, um, and, and the reason why we are doing this is to make it easier for them to be able to attract the end user or a buyer. That was essentially, to my understanding, why we're in this conversation.
That's correct.
And then my, my last thing though, um, this is just, I guess a question more to our, our city attorney. Uh, what is it that we are looking to have accomplished by the end of this ninety day kind of, well, ceasefire that we agreed to, so, and, and how much more time do we have until that ninety days is over?
Are you asking that question? Uh, I, I, I can go ahead and answer that question.
Sure, that'd be great.
Or Robert, since I'm more familiar, that's, um, you're, you're referencing the, um, we have a, it's a public record interim settlement agreement. So, those are goo- good questions, um, this is not the appropriate place to talk about them, but we, we will have, um, in the coming week, hopefully a closed session where, where we can, we can talk about that. Uh, but to answer your, I, I think one of, one of the questions is easy, it's, um, the expiration of the interim settlement agreement is June first, I believe.
Thank you.
Okay, any of my other two colleagues wanting to say anything? Raise, raise your hand or?
To the Chair.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, so, uh, so what was the purpose of this meeting?
Uh, Ms. Crossway, can you answer that?
Yeah, I, I can answer, or Mr. Beck, did you want to answer that? I, I ha- I have an understanding of what the purpose of the meeting was and it, my, from my perspective, it was to just update you on what's going on, that conversations have been had with, um, the property owner and what you could expect to get, um, for, for the additional study sessions. And the one I have on my calendar for the nineteenth, Wednesday, the nineteenth is the next meeting with, with the property owner, with the Marlboro representative. That was my understanding, Mr. Beck, did you have a?
Do you concur with that statement?
Yes, I, I concur with that, um, I concur the fact that it was, it was to provide, you know, real-time update prior to the nineteenth meeting, um, you know, I think, I think, and I'll say this, respectfully, you know, there's been progress made, um, we need obviously more progress to be made, but, um, but there's been some progress made and, and I think, uh, that's really what, what needed to be conveyed, that's why Melissa and I spent the time with them, I know Melissa spent some time with them on the tenth, um, as well, to try to get more progress made, um, but there has been, been progress made and, and that was the, the, the intention.
So when are we gonna be getting their, uh, their request as far as amendments and things like this? When are, when are we expected to see that, hear that? Actually touch what it is that they want?
Anybody, either, uh, I think Mr. Beck?
Well, so, the, the reason why Melissa and I are both sort of talking is it's sort of a two-pronged thing, there's the legal side of it, which is the actual general plan and that piece, but then there's also the concept of, you know, my side of it, which is the, the feasibility side and the actuality side of a project that's proposed, so that's why, just to make it clear to the public and to everyone involved, that's why her, Melissa and I are speaking the way that we are. My interpretation of my side of it in terms of as it relates to the development and proposal, the overlay will be part of that package on Wednesday, overlay meaning conceptual overlay, they've, they have concurred, and Melissa, if I'm wrong on this, please let me know, but they have concurred to recognizing, um, you know, the desired uses, the activation of this, of the Hawthorne Boulevard, um, the, the general framework of what in concept, the council and constituents want to see, um, and, and we're expecting a, an overlay of that on that side, and I know that Melissa's group will be expecting to see, um, some descriptive language, I believe, right, Melissa, as it relates to the, to the zone text amendment?
Correct, um, and to answer your question, council member English, I think they had a timeline that was proposed in, in one of the prior meetings, and I think they had proposed having something in within two months and having the process go through until October, that's my recollection. But that question as to when the application would be submitted and when all the specifics will be provided would be a great question to ask on Wednesday.
Okay, uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Thank you.
And then, um, after that, we'll go another round with, uh, council member Montero.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Beck, so at the last meeting, um, our planner, our planning department said that our, the specific plan and our zoning code are very flexible. And so whatever we, whatever they wanted to put in that space, whether it was, uh, tech office campus, creative media, um, uh, studio space for filming, we've, our, our code as it exists are, could probably accomplish it. And the only thing we would need to do is to make cha- to, uh, we would need to have, add a zone text amendment, and they could have almost anything they wanted because our, uh, the, the specific plan and our zoning code are very flexible. So, I was hoping to see what it is they wanted to put in there that our zoning code and the specific plan could not accomplish. If there was anything in there that we, what, what, what else are they thinking about that we can't do with everything the way it is, and if so, why would we need to amend anything right now?
Um, your interpretation, Mayor Pro Tem, is consistent with mine as well, and I believe with Melissa, and I believe with Greg and the team. That was my interpretation, that was what was passed along on, on, on the April twenty sixth meeting with them. Um, it was reiterated in the meeting earlier today, um, that, that is in fact, um, the goal, and that is in fact what, um, was conveyed. Um, I reiterated the, 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 the smorgasbord, which is a word that, you know, I used in our initial meeting, um, when I first started, and reiterated that to them both on the twenty sixth and again today. Um, and, and, and believe Melissa's group did the same thing, um, and so, to answer your question, it's, it's been conveyed, it's been reiterated, and, and, and you know, at the end of the day, it is, um, clear in my mind, um, that, um, the council is open to, um, things that are, um, within the desired uses that would activate Hawthorne Boulevard, some green space and, and, and welcoming in the community while also, um, utilizing a, a twenty-five acre land parcel to, um, to drive, um, to drive activity to, uh, the city center.
So are they still sticking with the, um, with their, their original point that, that we needed to change the specific plan and our zoning code, are, are they still sticking with that? Or that have they come to the, to our position that they don't, that these things do not need to be changed? And that whatever they need can be accomplished with a zone text amendment, have they come to that realization at least?
I, I, I'll go ahead and answer that, Mr. Beck. The, i- it, it all depends on what they're proposing, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, um, and we don't yet know that yet. You know, if they're going to propose something as simple as creative office space, and although our current code allows for that, uh, with my interpretation, um, they may want it to be specifically stated in there, creative office space, so that apparently that, it'll help them with their marketing. Um, those are things we just had through a zone text amendment.
Right, that's what, that's what you, you said before, and so that's why I'm confused as to what they, why they don't have something more concrete at this point.
If, if they were to propose something like, uh, a sports complex, it hasn't, you know, wasn't even thought of when you did the downtown specific plan or it's no, nowhere in our code, then you would need something larger or, or maybe even go a different route such as a development amendment or something like that, but?
So that was, that was why I asked the question, what is it that they are proposing that they think that our code does not accommodate? We need to know that, what, what, what is, is it, is, is, what is their vision that they believe they need all these changes? And that our code would not accommodate, because we haven't, we don't have any idea yet.
Yes, and, and that we don't know yet, that, that hasn't been communicated, at least to me, and, and I know Mr. Beck spoke with them just before this meeting, so maybe you have something to say about that, Chris? No, they, they haven't, they haven't been specific to that, other than, um, you know, the, the points that Melissa pointed out, um, in addition to, you know, my reiteration of the smorgasbord of uses that the council would be open to reviewing, um, and, and, and gave some examples, um, of those, again, Continental Park, uh, uh, excuse me, Douglas Park, Playa, Howard Hughes, other things, the question of green space came up, I articulated- I articulated to them again why the green space was important. Um we're continuing to follow the directions and the guidance of the council. Um in our meetings or in in these sessions and conveying that to to them. Um them being the Charles Company and and their representatives.
Thank you.
Okay, I might I have a couple of comments um real quick. Uh look, I I I'm not gonna beat around the bush and uh I can say this, at least my myself. And at least one other council uh person has uh has uh come has realized that uh. They're already in negotiations with a buyer. I mean, this thing is like basically, you know, we just the the sale of this property is already being discussed, so. I don't know what all this diddly-daddling is taking place where they can't give us. You know, what the requirements are, or is it uh or is it just uh not high on their priority list while it's higher than our priority? So um I think we just need to have a more direct conversation with them or amongst ourselves. And um not just, you know, just call just call things what they are, you know, I think. Um there's at least one other ca- uh council person here who has heard the same stuff or seen it. So I don't know why things are not uh the other party is not being as forthcoming as they could be with regards to that. And uh.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
The other thing, no, I will, I will. And then all the we have milestones that we're looking at and they're not accomplishing what they need to do on those milestones. And what's been committed to on their part. I mean, we can't be extending and extending and understanding, understanding. Because our ex- previous experiences have not been positive with this particular developer, so go ahead, Mr. Beck.
My my uh my apologies, Mr. Mayor. I I should have let you finish. Um I would say this, um very, very. Um nonspecific. Um the site is a desirable site. And there are, there will be and are developers that would be interested in that site, but understanding. Um the price point and what can be built there, um you know. Will only be able to determine who that group is, right? And so um in my very sort of. That that's the space in which I work with and have for decades. Um I know that as fact, um very preliminarily had. Very off the record conversations with a few myself who would be interested um if given the opportunity to do that. Um either work with them or do something there. Um that has not been brought up. That has not been anything formally put together or anything on that side of it. Um you know, but I do know in in my experience in in the marketplace that we're in today. Um you know, we're seeing that sort of the ends of COVID now, money is still very cheap for development and developers are looking to build projects. Um so um I guess that is to confirm what you're saying. I I can't confirm what you're saying in terms of if there are negotiations, because I don't know that as fact, but what I do know is. Um there would be, if given the opportunity, there would be groups interested. Um well-known groups, for that matter, interested in pursuing the opportunity if that opportunity was allowed to be pursued. So.
Councilmember Montero?
Okay, thank you, Ms. May. Uh uh just to follow up on that note with Mr. Beck and what you say to Mr. Mayor. So maybe uh we need to put a message out there that, you know, the City of Hawthorne is willing to deal with any other developers. That wants to develop that mall and to come to talk to us. Uh and tell us what they want to put in there, and then then maybe we can talk to us, have and see if that is a desirable project. And we will put Hawthorne is not stopping the Charles Company to sell that mall. We want that mall to be developed and let's talk to some other people to say, okay, we will give you a green light to go talk to Charles Company and and. Offer them a money and then and then we will, we will tell you what we want to develop that mall and if. If your project is visible and agreeable with the city council and the City of Hawthorne, we're willing to to work with you. Okay, so maybe we need to put a message out there on on the on the social media, on 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 the cloud. That we not the one who's blocking Charles Company for selling that building. Now, the other thing that I'm frustrated to tell you to to tell you the truth, I I don't want to point finger at nobody. But I'm gonna point finger on Charles Company because that means that they're using a delay tactic again, okay? So I'm being honest. Because I asked that the uh that lady, uh Ms. Camacho, the land user attorney. I I wrote it right here on my notes, that I take notes. And I said, I asked for them to give us a draft of what they wanted to amend. And our staff, Greg, Melissa, and 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 Beck was going to be sit down with them. The land user and the architects and the engineering to tell you guys what amendment they want specifically. So that we could be able to have a very open dialogue on next meeting with Charles Company. So they failed. They're literally, they failed because they didn't follow, because we 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 get on their bluff. Because when they said they want tax amendment, they want the downtown street line to be amended, and then we said, okay, what amendment do you want? We gave them that 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 key. To come back and say, we want A, B, C, D done, and then we would reply. We can do it, we cannot do it. Our books are open that we have tax amendment, we have uh downtown specific plan. We got uh condition use permit, anything could be built there, based on if you if you give us a CUP. So that is where uh we need to be honest here and with the seat of heart on make sure to say, look, Hawthorne is not the one. That is impede the Charles Company to develop that mall. Uh because that because I know it's a delay tactic because now, when we meet on the nineteen, you only have eleven days for June first. For these uh for these agreements to expire.
That's it.
Okay, so so like like I say, so that's meaning we have accomplished zero. And that is not unacceptable.
Thank you. Um I believe I had Councilmember Reyes English and then Councilmember Patterson. Go ahead, Councilwoman. Councilwoman? Councilwoman Reyes English?
Got it. Thank you, Mayor. Um that was my reason I asked what was the me- today's meeting. If there was a previous meeting, one on the tenth, and then. Yeah, but the the discussions that uh. Was supposed to be ongoing to come back today and tell us something that they're, you know, that they want. That obviously didn't happen, so now you're going into a meeting. On the nineteenth to discuss overlay uses and activation of Boulevard. Well, how is that even conceivable if we're not even? Getting the simplest questions here today. Um there there doesn't, there doesn't seem to be a substance. With regards to meetings that you all are having and ultimately the plan of action. Because. We really can't move on anything if we're not being given specifics and and if, you know, the case being that. You know, there's potential talks for the sale of the mall, and then why aren't we being told that exactly, directly? I mean, because if that's the case, and we understand that there's a potential sale out there. And then, you know, we need to move and help that along, but if they're not planning on selling it, that was never their intentions. But just to make amendments so that they could be able to build out, um. There doesn't seem to be a a a clear, a clear understanding here and come and come the first. What's supposed to be the first? What was supposed to be the final result of the first?
Well, that's the discussion that we have to have in a closed session.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um I guess.
Councilwoman? Okay.
Yeah, I I I I all I'm saying is it in my opinion, I think we're wasting meetings here. To speak on something that we don't even have substance or information on. There's nothing that you're giving me that's any different than that was told to us. Previously, and this was during the time that uh the mayor was inquiring on the sale. This was back in April, so between April and today, there's still no information, nothing.
Um uh Councilwoman and then Ca- uh Council colleagues, I'd like to let you guys know, I mean, June first is not a moving deadline for me in my eyes. It's not a moving deadline. June first is a very important deadline that I believe we need to take a look at seriously. I mean, we've been very generous over the last uh. Twenty years, twen- twenty years or whatever, or fifteen at the at the minimum, so uh Councilmember Patterson?
Uh thanks, Ms. Mayor. So a couple of things, so one is I don't feel as our role to court buyers for the mall developer. Um especially in the absence of them publicly listing the property for sale, and they've listed property for sale. And ask for some help in buying buyers. Um sure, but uh. But that's really not our role. It's not our role to to even vet buyers for them if they have a, you know, they own the property and something wherever they want. Uh they really don't need our approval, but I definitely agree that.
True.
I definitely, what's that?
Look, complete your thoughts.
I definitely agree that uh we should make ourselves available to make it as as easy as possible for them to develop the property. Or attract a buyer and do whatever we we do, but if we don't own the property, we shouldn't act like we we run the property. But essentially, um I I don't think there's anything else we all need to talk about on this particular subject. I think. Need to wait and see what they have to say on the uh nineteenth. Uh have our meeting, our close session with our attorney's office to understand what our options are as far as uh. Um yeah, our existing agreement. Um you know, obviously, there there's no real new information at this point, so I think we should just kind of move on to whatever other business that we have. And and see what they what they have to say on the seventeen or the, yeah, on the seven, on the nineteen.
Okay, any final com- any final comments from my the rest of the colleagues?
Uh yeah, Mr. Mayor, have my hands up.
Uh yeah, go ahead, uh Councilmember, and then I'll let uh Mr. Beck and then Re- uh Ray, Councilmember Reyes.
Actually, uh Mr. Mayor, I I I want to give a directive to the staff, okay, for for the meeting on the nineteen. I want us to uh uh Melissa and Greg um from the planning department. Um to create maybe one page document. That it shows them that all these projects that they 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 have mentioned. On there, this sheet here, you know, they have the mixed use, residential village, creative medium production, tech office campus. Uh R and D industrial. I want you guys to look at this and go back. And create a one page document and we can say, our zoning. Our downtown specific plan allow this, 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 and that based on this A, B, C, D. So we were gonna give them a one sheet paper. I want you to, you know, next uh on the nineteen to put it on the screen and show them. That our zoning. Our downtown specific plan allowed for all of these mixed use or or uh. We call flex user, right? So we want to show them that we did our homework. So so when they're gonna be talking about, you know, blah, 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 that that our our specific plan and our zone are not flex and not flexible. So we're gonna say, oh, no, here, you can do this if you want. We're not impeding you. Okay, so I want us to have a a a at least one sheet or two sheet to show them. That uh we work, we do, we did, how we do intelligent, because believe me, I'm gonna be very hot on them on 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 Wednesday.
If I could uh say something, and and I'm uh I I'm not saying in defense of them, but. I I think um they realize that we allow a lot of different things. I think they're, my understanding is they wanted us to put specific types to help them market the site. So um I just want to make that 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 portion.
So why they didn't ask us then?
Uh we did, we did ask, but we just didn't receive that. Yeah, we just haven't received it yet.
All right, uh. And and uh Mr. Mayor, I wanted to bring on franking up since Mr. Beck is here, but there's something just for us to think about, okay? Uh because I know, you know, we lacking of uh somebody that uh who knows about uh economic development in here in in our city. Uh I wanted to see if maybe we can think about extend Mr. Beck his uh scope of work. Try to look to see if can bring us some other business for our disclosing shops, you know, like the hometown buffet, the ninety-nine cent store. And some other stores on the Boulevard has been closed, that we need to reach out to potential business to bring us to Hawthorne, please. I don't know if something that my colleagues can agree on, but I'm just throwing out there.
Okay, um are there, is there any feedback towards that? Okay, uh are we kind of close to uh final discussions on this subject?
Yes, to the chair.
Okay, uh real quick, uh let me just ask for something, uh Councilwoman. Um I had requested a uh what you usage, a breakdown and and as to the approximate. Tax benefit, sales tax benefit and benefit to the city. Uh when am I going to receive that?
So, Mr. Mayor, uh I I do recall you requesting that information and again, being able to give you the most accurate data and information. Will require, after going back and checking, will require a better breakdown in terms of what we would like to see there. If it's a straight line, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent of uses. That enables me to get you a more accurate analysis done. Um it's 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 a little bit of a moving target. As it relates to giving you accurate numbers without knowing specifically the breakdown of each use.
I I would like to see something that's more objective than subjective. That I don't I don't don't want, I don't want necessarily numbers. I need to have a general characteristics of the types of usage. And the types of tax uh tax benefits, just in, like I said, subjective uh terms.
So i- in that in that breakdown and per- and perhaps maybe you um. There could be a be a more specific conversation had about it, but but if you're saying uh uh subjective, that's fine. It 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 might use an analysis based on a quarter of each use, a quarter retail, a quarter creative, quarter um studio and.
I really, I really just say everybody's talking all this stuff about studios, studios, whoa, studios, okay. But do we, what what kind of taxes do we get from that typically? I mean, people, every everybody's throwing that you studio stuff. What if there's zero taxes? You know, what if all there is is just like filming permit taxes that we get? What if it's uh some sales ta- well, some other types of taxes? What? All I see right now. And based on our sa- uh permit, film permit fees schedule, is that it's a poor source of revenue for the city, okay? That well, or no, no, you know, but you kind of see what I'm saying? But that's why I need you to do the job, so start giving me the other um sales tax and economic benefits towards the city. Or if it's just zilch, I need you to be honest with us and tell us.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm all uh just to be clear, I'm always honest, whether you whether the people are gonna like it or not, just making it real clear with everyone. But it's hard for me to go and say, you say, well, give me the taxes on filming. Well, there's multiple types of filming and content, and again, I'm not trying to go go back and forth. I can do an analysis and work with staff and in creating something that you're looking for. But how much of the site are we depicting for that? Are we using my analysis or my analogy of a smorgasbord of a twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five and twenty-five? And and in that way, you can get an accurate depiction or am I missing?
Just cut it up twenty-five, 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 at least the beginning, but this is something I already asked for, yeah. Use twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. But then I need you to include like the bullet points on what the different uh sales tax benefits. Like I said, I mean, when can I get something like? Mr. Beck?
I will work with staff on that because there are other aspects of um. Potential tax uh generating things within the city code that I'll need to work with Greg in his office and determining that. Um and 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 give you a more accurate statement in terms of how about to you?
Because we're, you know, the city council is not a phil- phil- we're not a philanthropist necessarily. We don't, we're not philanthropists. Um that help out developers just for the sake of helping people out. We are here to make decisions that are going to benefit our our city and its residents economically, you know, to increase the quality of life. Uh so, I mean, we need to re- really kind of get an idea so that when plans start coming back to us. Or if, who knows if they ever will, that we'll be able to be poised to know, okay, well, I have a general idea. That type of use gives me this type of benefit or it doesn't, so that we can make a better judgment as to what the. Um palette of uses uh should be there or what we could agree on. So if you could. Wh- when do you think you could give me something general, even through conversation, but like something general, just qualitative, no numbers?
Um, you know, Mr. Mayor, can I talk to Greg and the staffing and let you know on Wednesday when that'll be? I don't want to misconstrue and say, I'll get it to you by date, and that's not a realistic.
How about this? How about talk to staff? Um you know, staff or planning department and city attorneys or whoever you need to, and then come back to me on uh. And the council, of course, and and just give us an idea as to what the uh what what you could present to us.
Will do, Mr. Mayor.
That's it, we'll just leave it like that for right now, okay? But think about kind of, you know what I'm trying to get at.
I I absolutely understand and 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 don't want to feel that your request is falling on deaf ears at all.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Councilmember Reyes English, I think this is kind of the end of this discussion, but go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, it's the end of the discussion and trust me, I'm I'm already over it.
Yeah, it's the end of the discussion and trust me, I'm I'm already over it. Um, can I get uh, interim city attorney Kim to do a legal confidential that speaks to uh. The date of June first for us prior to us going in closed session, so. Uh, legal confidential, please, and um, hopefully we could get that in the next, you know, twenty four, forty eight hours, so that we could understand. What we're looking at prior to our closed session, okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's a good request, thank you, all right, guys, um, thank you, Mister Beck.
Thank you, Mister Beck.
Number five, discussion.
Thank you, Mister Beck, thank you all.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, item number five is a discussion of interviews from the May twelve, twenty twenty one special city council meeting. That's in response to the city's request for proposal and qualifications for the cannabis program implementation. And related consulting services, as well as a selection of one to three finalists from the following consultants. EJMA Planning and Development, SCI Consulting Group, Herb Weston and Associates, Bear Demographics and Research. HDL Companies and the Cannabis Public Policy Consulting, and therefore provide further direction to staff regarding uh, the final selection.
I have a question that I'm going to throw out to my council colleagues, based on my understanding, today was going to only be a discussion. On any feedback anybody has on any of the uh, presentations. Um, I think even co- even the mayor pro temp, who was not here, might be able to ask a couple of things or comment, because she wasn't here, right? And but we are going to have another meeting to actually make the decisions on, on this, on Wednesday at eleven, is that correct? My council colleagues?
No.
Go ahead. We have a meeting that's scheduled for uh.
We don't have.
For Wednesday at eleven.
No, but that's, that's, that is the mall meeting. Okay, that was the Charles Company meeting.
So are we, so I confused that I didn't register, so the mall meeting is on the nineteenth with Charles Company, correct?
That's correct.
And so today is the fi- today is the final meeting on this?
Today we supposed to have us the score. And and the 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 to go, remember we talked about the three, two to one, right?
I I assume that today we would cast some type of vote to narrow it down to three.
Okay, then.
That was my assumption, I could be wrong, but that was my assumption that we would kind of whittle down to five to three today, if if, and I'm okay if we can do that. We're not ready to do that today, that's fine.
Um, I would, I mean, I have my comments on that, because I'm still looking at stuff, but um, I'll defer to council if I. There's a majority that wants to just do it today, I'll just do it based on whatever I have, council member, raise English?
I I I wa- I wanted to actually ask where the other colleagues were with regards to um, narrowing down their selection, do we feel that we need? An additional uh, day, do we need additional questions that we need to pose to the? Uh, five that maybe some still want, uh, you know, some answers to? Cause uh, I'm open, I'm open to not rushing, I'm open to another day. And then I'm open to selecting ultimately three and out of the three, uh, ultimately doing, you know, background.
Um, I, it would be great if the count, I mean, I'll be honest, I would. I would prefer to have an extra day or two, to be, to look this stuff over, just to, because uh, I'm looking at the proposals a little bit in depth. Um, and uh, I wanted to see if anybody had any comments today on anything, but you know, I don't want to.
Basically, I would, I would agree with with an extra day, Mayor, I think we, I think we could all use that, I'm.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Yeah, would you guys like to vote after our mall conversation on uh, on Wednesday?
For what, the three?
We have cast a vote that will narrow down our selection of three.
And uh, and we did, uh, in a point of clarification from any of my council colleagues. Uh, the intention was to go from five to three and then one on a separate day, or five, three and one, uh, five to three and three to one on that same day?
I thought it was separate days, one day, five to three, and we might choose a interview that three again and then. On separate day to three to one, but.
I think, yeah, I don't.
Excuse me one second, because. You guys are are not following what you, what you uh, uh, did on the beginning. Because now you changing the game in in uh, uh, on halfway there. There was a specific instruction when we, when we starting with the RFP, how we were going to do this process. And after we received that RFP, uh, uh, all the proposals, we came up, did the idea that we were going to have. Interview, uh, select, uh, candidate for in- for interviews. And then come, come back, uh, with a score, force the select, go from three, two to one. So you changing the procedure uh, uh, as you going, so you starting al- already to make, to 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 create confusion in this process. That the people out there does not understanding, so we need to clarify where we at. And let me tell you, it's a shame, because you had a month and a half to review all these proposals, now you're gonna tell me that you need an up couple of days to read them? That's a shame on you. I'm not rushing this process, but come on, be be honest, if you create a process, how to do things, do it right. Do not come back and change the game during the, during the game.
Council, okay, council member English, and then council member Patterson, go ahead.
Thank you, I, you know, I I'm for all due diligence, um, again, I I. Not trying to to reference that anyone is rushing here, but uh, you know, this, this needs to be a good program. It needs to be a good thorough program, it needs to be a a good and thorough uh, vetting. Of of all applicants, which include the five that we did uh, interview. Um, I know that oftentimes things do change, but I wanna make sure that we're doing this right. And because there isn't a sense of rushing, uh, I don't think necessarily one day is gonna hurt. But there are already the five that we interviewed, it's my, it's my understanding, we would then narrow it down to three.
Exactly.
Okay, so if we could narrow it down to three, um, that would be ideal, but. I wanna also give colleagues that they feel they need an extra day to be able to do that too, and I don't think it's gonna make. Or break the fact that at the end of the day, we will be selecting three, and then from there ultimately the one. Um, again, um, trying to appease everybody.
I'm willing to give them couple of days, it's not, no doubt about it, but I'm just saying, but do not change the process, because there was a process that was selected. From from the beginning, so that is where Mister Mayor talked the beginning about people ha- is confused out there. Is because that uh, that's mean, you know, the leadership is failing, because you guys are not following the procedure that you set up.
Well, let's, let's be, let's be very clear, Councilmember Montero, we had established that we were going to to select three. The top three at the last meeting, so who who added the last two?
Well, because.
Alright, so then that's, that's my point.
Because we got, we got these people have the vote, they were tight, there was, there was two other proposals that had the same score. Uh, the same amount of vote, so that is where you don't eliminate them, because that is where confusion can create and people can come and try to sue us. So that's what I'm saying, that that we would, we would, we decide that today, we're going to come up. With 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 our score, and then from there we'll select three. That we would think about or bring them for more question, or three of them, we can do the background check. The the vetting them and then select one, uh, now, if you want a couple of days, go ahead, I'll give you a couple of days, but do not change the rule.
I I could do it today, I could do it today, I could do it today, alright, but.
Cause you got a month and a half to review all the proposals, so if you're telling me that now you need more time to read them, so that's mean you fit, you didn't read them from the beginning.
Well, I'd like to review the videos that we have.
I I would too, Mayor, I will.
I'll give you guys a couple more days, I don't, I don't, I don't mind to to do it on Wednesday, or even uh, if you want, you know, doing a a first week in in June. Because like I said, next week I'm gonna be out of town.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, do you have any comments based on what you s- uh, are you prepared to vote today, Mayor Pro Tem, did you have any questions?
No, I I can be prepared to vote, I have reviewed all of the proposals, I can be prepared to vote if the group wants to vote. Um, I would, I would, I would prefer to have an extra day, a couple of days, but I can vote today, I am prepared to vote.
I could vote today too, I mean, I like.
Oh, I I I said, uh, okay, so I'll give you guys enough until Wednesday then, I'll give you a couple of days.
I know, we could, we could. But uh, who are we going to turn these into, are we going to just hand them over to?
We get them to Vaughn, or to the city attorney.
Did we establish that?
So are we, are we, Mayor, see, do not need another day, you don't want?
Um, we can vote, we can vote today, and it's, it's only bec- I was just putting it out there. You know, I just.
I'm not in the office to hand anything to the city attorney, city manager, excuse me. And I was hoping, uh, my thought is we would cast a vote, I mean, I have those scoring sheets, but I was gonna give those scoring sheets as as my vote.
Are you, uh, uh, can you repeat that again, so you you are gonna hand those over?
As I'm not in this, in the, in city hall to handing he over to the city manager. Uh, it's one, but two, I didn't, I wasn't gonna be handing over my scoring sheets as my vote, but I wanted to cast a vote.
Okay, so these are the worksheets, correct, and we're going to be submitting the final percentage out of a hundred? Councilmembers, clarify, I mean, what is our understanding?
I think all of them were competent, so I think it's a matter, I I can't imagine it'd be drastic differences between. Everybody's score, so my suggestion is, is everybody has opportunity to cast one, two or three votes. To determine who the the final three are.
Alright. Hey, I'm only asking because everybody said, people are saying that we discussed what the protocol is going to be, we received this sheets. Are we going to turn in the summary sheet, or just the individual percentages for each of the five?
Well, uh, we should know, we should, we should turn in this, this one page sheet, the summary sheet that have all the five consultants. And then uh, and then we we, we were giving an instruction how to, how to score them in each category. So, so.
Which sheet, which sheet is that?
Uh, this is the fi- is the summary sheet that has all the five consultants and have. Uh, organization manager experience, maximum point was seventeen, experience working seventeen, recent similar seven. So it was a score of one hundred percent, and then you score basis on on interview, based on on the proposal. You give them a score on on these one, two, three, four, five, six category. That come up to one hundred, or ninety, or eighty, or seventy nine, or something like that. And then from this point, you're gonna, cause I already can see what is my three top scoring. And that's my, it's my three, and then uh, if all five of us, and then we have to come up to see, okay, who, what was my three? What was Mister Mayor's three, what is Miss English's three, what is Miss Valentine's three, what is David Perron's three? To come up with the three finalists.
My understanding is that we would get those totals for each individual council member, for each of the groups. And some everybody's uh, total for each of those groups.
I hear, I can give this to anybody who wants. For the city manager or the city attorney.
Either one, two or three consultants, I think that should be a worksheet for ourselves to help us identify who our top three are.
You don't want, so, look, are we gonna present the, are we gonna present the totals? And then have them be summed up, or are we going to just choose a top three? What's the deal here, I mean, Councilmember Montero, you feel that we had the protocol laid out, you tell us.
To the chair.
Let Miss English go.
I I, to be honest, um, I went off of uh, the questions that I had posed and all of everyone else's question. On whether or not they were, they were knowledgeable in the cannabis program, moreover, what's most important to me is policy. We can't have, we can't have policy implemented, and we can't give direction on policy, if it is, we're not sure. Uh, who could do that for us best, and so my number one thing is policy, it's not so much. Uh, what one entity received in numbers, uh, again, I listened very carefully to all of those that we were questioning. And what those responses were, and which which were the best responses for the questions posed, so that's important to me. Um, and I do have my top three.
I'll defer to my council member colleagues, just tell us what the, what the protocol is.
Well, it's like, uh, uh, you know, it was clear before that all of us were going to come up with our top three. And then uh, basis on the score, we know, we are going to go back and see if there is anything to come, you know, whoever like. For example, if if I pick up one of the group and then all five of you, all four of you pick up of one of the same group. So that is gonna come up with, okay, that group had all the five. All the five top score from the five council, and the other, these other group only have three councils scored them higher. These other group have only two two councils scoring their high, so that's the way you're going to come up with your final three. Mister Greg Tamaguchi, you you create this sheet, so explain to the council, please, how did you envision it, please?
Um, council, those sheets, uh, the individual sheets were there to assist you. Uh, in using the grading criteria so that you get individually grade. And then the summary sheet was as um, council member Montero explained, for you to then transfer those scores. To a, to an overall summary sheet, which would then enable you to identify your top three candidates. And the intent was to mimic the exact same way that you had voted in the previous five. Which was you each took your top ones and then the, the five were then collected, so I wanted. The intent was to use that same sort of procedure in reaching each of you your top three. And then again, with this, with the number of votes or whoever, um, whoever got the most uh, mentions. Of their top threes of each of you would then become the one, two and three to move on to number one. Um, what I, what I was hoping to get today was direction on how you wanted to then narrow from three to one. Um, understanding that interviews were already done, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, maybe, I don't know, my suggestion was going to be today that you have them come back and do a presentation on a topic. Of cannabis that you may have wanted, uh, in addition to answering any additional questions that you may have.
What were, Greg, what were you expecting to get from us, what exact thing were you ex- expecting to get from us?
Uh, that each council member would identify their top three uh, candidates, uh, and then uh, come to the same conclusion.
Okay.
Uh, similar.
I'll give you my top three candidates.
Thank you, Greg.
So it's not gonna be on a point system, this is just all this, okay, I'm ready to give my uh, top three. Is everybody else ready to give their top three?
Yes.
Should we write him down and then give him to Vaughn?
I I think that what, is everybody here in house? Uh, council member Patterson, if there's a way you can send a message to.
I can text him, yeah, I can text him.
To the chair, I can walk to each individual council member's office with a vanilla envelope, seal it, write your name on it and do the calculations on your approval.
Do you want, do you want all?
On a separate piece of paper.
Okay, do you want all of the sheets or just the to- the the scoring sheet?
Only this sheet, Miss Valentine, this sheet here, one sheet, it was one summary sheet.
Why do we need to give the scores if we already chose our top three?
Right, that's how I feel.
If you chose your top three, this is.
No, no, Miss, no, no, because you have, you see, this is what I'm saying, that you guys, you guys are trying to change the, change the rule a little bit.
Nah, it's just not clear.
Because, because uh, you use, the way it's supposed to be, for example, my top three. Is because one of them scored ninety two, another one scored eighty nine, another one scored eighty eight. And then the other one scored eighty two, seventy one, so that's the way you select your top three.
Okay, fill it out.
It's a simple math.
So do you have to, do we have to fill out on the, on the scoring sheet, every category on the scoring sheet or just the totals?
Yeah, well, uh, to just give you an example, Miss Valentine, I I gave everybody a score for all the six categories.
Right, and and on the scoring sheet, I have the scores, but I didn't put them, I didn't total them all up. I can, I can give the total, but not each category for each company.
Yeah, but it, see, because I I tabulate everything, so I give everybody a score.
I understand what you're saying, what I'm saying is, I have them on the scoring sheets separately. I haven't transferred it to the total sheet.
Ah, okay.
So that's what I'm asking, do you need, do you need all, every, every, every figure transferred to the so- total sheet, or is it enough to just give the totals?
You can just give the total for say, let's say you put SCI got this total.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Three tops, uh, scoring.
Three tops or all of them?
Uh, well. I'm just, I I, you know. It is only three that we selected out of the five.
So we're only, oh, we're only putting down totals for the top three, is that right? Okay. Okay.
Well, so then you're, you'll keep your worksheet and you turn in a separate sheet of paper. With your top three and the score you gave them, that's it.
And just the totals, nothing else?
Yeah, the total.
Okay.
Where's everybody at? Uh, we're gonna wait for Mayor Proten. Um, Mr. City Manager? Did you receive everything?
Uh, yes, I did.
Have you created a tally?
Yes, I have a tally uh ready for presentation.
Okay, what is that tally? Go ahead, the uh tell us who the top three are, based on what you got.
Well, unfortunately, we have a a tie for four. So we have uh four of the five consultants with the same score.
Say that one more time?
Of the five consultants, we have four of the consultants with the same score, that are the same votes.
There we go, that's what I I figured was gonna happen.
No, it's in line to what uh it's in line to all of our, what we've been trying to do, right?
Then we're gonna have a tie.
And those four are?
Sorry, uh, Mr. Patterson?
I'm just curious, those four are?
Mayor Vargas? Are you gonna be directive to read those uh those tallies off?
Um yeah, just, yeah, just, yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I can figure the council member, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh EJMA has three votes. SCI has three votes. CPP, three votes. Bear, three votes. HDL, two votes.
HDL only two votes, huh?
HDL only two votes?
Surprised.
What is a correct way of breaking the tie? Any suggestions from my council colleagues?
Uh, we can all do one vote. And the top three win.
Or we could uh, we could choose our, out of those four, out of. Out of those four, you can assign. Well, actually. Maybe uh what we could do at this point is whoever your top three are, you just assign a, give them a point system, whoever your top. If you chose three. Your tops, your top one can have a a point system of three. Your second one can have a point system of two and your third one can have a point system of one. And then we could somewhere uh sum up all the different points. Because you on your summary sheet know which one is the first, the second and the third. So we could do it that way. Stick to your original three, don't be forced to vote for your uh for any of the the tied four. And then just assign, uh just put them in order and then. Based on your sheet and then Vaughn can add uh can add up all the points. So we weight them based on position, that's my suggestion to my colleagues. What do you think, Patterson, council member? I don't know, you got something better, just let me know, cause.
You wanna, you, you're asking for another uh another vote of the top three?
Another vote of the top three with the your first place one being given a points of three? Your second one, based on your, based on your sheet. The second place gets two and then the third position gets one. And then we can summarize all those and uh.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
And then we see where everything lies.
So so we, you need another blank sheet to fill out, right?
And and why I say that, guys, only because if you go by the total points on your percentages. Some of the points might be skewed towards the lower part because some of them, us might have been assigning lower percentages. Others of us could be assigned sort of higher percentages. This way it's fair based on just the order in which they are on your uh summary sheet.
Uh so uh Mister Mayor, yeah, so uh for example. If if I wanna, if I wanna vote, for example, just give a three point to my top candidate and then. Just give a zero to the others.
No, no, well, we wanna see where these all lay out.
But it's my choice. I I don't need to give the other, the other to a two or one.
We're only giving a value for our top three, you know, three, two or one.
What was the point of going through this whole exercise?
Well, no, no, but because now we got four candidates that are tied, right? So uh eventually, you know, we should be maybe only be voting on those four candidates now. The fifth is eliminated already.
Okay, I think that's true, I think that's 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 true.
Then we could, we can go four, three, two, one.
Yeah.
So you, we only have to vote on those four because the the uh the number fifth had been eliminated.
Do we wanna rank the four that are remaining?
Yeah.
Yes.
Everybody will rank the four that are.
Everybody will rank the four that are remaining.
Yes.
The top one would get four points, the next one three, the next one two and the next one one. Okay, guys?
Four, three.
The chair, would you like me to reread the the four?
So is the total ten points then?
Shall we do this, we do this?
What is the total number?
Yeah, it's five, ten point, yes. Four, three, two, one.
Okay.
So it's, it's uh read it the with the Vaughn.
Okay, yes, so the the four-way tie are between uh EJMA. SCI, CPP and Bear.
Okay. Based on what you got over here, then you assign the points, okay, guys?
Uh I'm sorry, Vaughn, real quick, you said uh one EJMA, two SCI, three?
Uh it's cannabis public policy consulting.
Oh, the cannabis public, hold on.
Was the point system clear to everybody though, just so that we don't?
Can you repeat that?
Okay, I'm gonna start from the top, so the four candidates.
Oh, uh, no, I was asking, I'm sorry, I was asking the mayor to repeat the point system.
So, okay, so you're based on the four uh that are, that made it through. You're going to look at your totals here and rank them in order, only the ones that survived.
Right.
Rank them in order from number one, your top one. The, that's corresponds to your point system, one, two, three, four. And then you just assign a a point of four next to the top one.
Your first choice, four points.
Yes.
First choice, four points, last choice, one point.
Exactly, thank you.
Voting is so democratic.
Well, I mean, right, I mean, that's, I mean. Alright, I got it. But it needs to correspond to the order that you had on your worksheet, that was the whole point, right? Of us going through the worksheet.
Yeah, yeah, hundred percent. So interesting, I don't exactly who everybody voted for.
Did everybody submit theirs? Councilmember Patterson, you good?
All done.
I honestly think we could have just chosen based on this process today, but. Alright guys, um. What I, what I want to do is, for the sake of uh, expediency. And because of, okay, so. Okay, we're going to ask um, Councilmember Montero to present your item. Are you ready, Councilmember Montero? And then, and then uh, he can come back with it?
Uh, Mister Mayor, we need uh, we need Vaughn to be present.
Okay.
City manager has to be present.
For this as well anyways, okay, got it, I understand.
Uh, I actually have the total scores in less than a minute.
Okay, so now if, if Vaughn is the president, so we can discuss the item, my, my, my discussion item.
Okay, Councilmember Montero? Go ahead.
Alright, thank you Mister Mayor, um, I just wanna, you know, clarify because um. That's what I'm saying, you know, the last city council meeting was a, it was a, a, a lot of different uh, discussion. About right of re- recruitment, uh, firm to, to hire. Uh, a, a consultant for us to find, uh, to put a net out there to find a city attorney. And also the city manager. But I just wanna clarify because when we negotiate the contract with the Mister Vaughn Norris for interim city manager. We said we were going to give him six months, okay? Uh, so I don't want us to, just to be in the impression that we're gonna have. Uh, a new city manager coming in, you know, in, in, in ninety days or, or in forty-five days. So I wanna make sure that we are giving uh, Mister Vaughn Norris the chance. You know, to, to work diligently with the other department because right now, you know, he's, he's building the rapport. To build a good relationship with the, the staff and the each department. Uh, try to make sure that the departments are running efficiently. And also try to nu- negotiate contract with the union, so we need to give him our support. And give him understanding that um, at least he's gonna be interim city manager for at least six months. And then we will evaluate his, his performance. And if, if we decide that we like what he's doing, maybe he could get the job. Or we can just hire a new city manager, but I wanna make sure that we give him at least the six months that we set it. On that uh, negotiation during the interim uh, city manager agreement. So we don't wanna be uh, giving a message out there that we not supporting him on what he's doing. Uh, uh, in the, in the city hall because we need to have a continuity of government. That is stable, that our staff have somebody that they can trust. And then they can build the rapport and make sure that all the department are running uh, efficiently and they doing the job. And we having good contracts out there with the union and also we're gonna have a budget. Uh, for twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, so I wanna make sure that we give him that, that uh, support. Make sure that the, that at least he knows that he's gonna do this job for this six months and then from there we'll decide what we wanna do, okay? Everybody's clear?
Okay. Thank you, item closed.
Uh, uh, hold on, uh, Miss uh, hold on, Christine had a hand up.
Christine.
Um, so I know that we had discussion uh, regarding the recruitment. So, uh, we want to hold off on making that an immediate start for that city manager recruitment, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, no.
Oh no.
No.
I'm sorry with, I'm sorry Mister Mayor, with a point of clarification, uh, this item should not be discussed as it is not noted on tonight's agenda. And so we had um, one individual from the public request to speak on, on the, that particular matter. But it is not noted on tonight's agenda, uh, we're happy to put it on the following agenda coming up next week.
Which specific, what aspect of this conversation?
Um, I'm sorry, I understand that Miss uh, Tomi Kawa was discussing the city manager recruitment, is that correct?
Yeah, that, that in itself is a, a separate uh, I, I would agree that it's a separate. A separate topic altogether.
I'm sorry, I apologize, that's item number seven, I thought we were still on item number five.
Okay, we just wanna limit the discussion here to just exactly what Councilmember Montero discussed. Which is just reminder of one of the term, which is for six months for interim city manager um, Vaughn Norris. And nothing else beyond that, we can't discuss any additional terms.
Is that identified?
Just limited to that. I'm sorry.
The term of six months, was that identified in his contract?
Uh, yes, it was.
Yeah, so I would imagine that if for whatever reason there was a new city manager identified prior to six months. That they would work together until that six months ago, I, I don't, I don't know. I guess. On a, another agenda to discuss.
Yeah, yeah.
The timing of.
To discuss the terms of, any terms of this contract, it, it would have to be done at a regular meeting, so.
So we not asking.
Clarification.
Yeah, we not asking to change anything, it's just to give Mister Norris at least the six months like we, we set it. Doing the agreeing on, on the, on the thirteen and on the twenty-seventh of April. So for Christine, just keep going with the process the way we voted last Tuesday night. Uh, it doesn't mean, we can still recruit it, but doesn't mean we're going to hire somebody immediately, okay? That's my spiel. I'm done.
Spiel, with the accent, the German accent, spiel.
Alright, your city managers, do we have a, a, a vote?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's conclude this guys, thank, and thank you Councilmember Montero.
Absolutely. So, uh, we have. With sixteen uh, points, we have S C I. With fifteen points, we have E J M A. With eleven points, we have C P P. And also with eleven points, we have Bear. So we still have a four-way tie. Or, excuse me, we have a tie for third place.
How about we vote just on third place?
Yes. We should do, we should do that.
So we know what number one and two are, let's vote for three.
Or there is, or there is another option, just eliminate the, 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 the two, we just keep two.
We said three.
Well, because you got the go, all of them got the same vote, so, so all you're gonna be fair. Is eliminate both of them and then we just go with the top two.
No, you said there was gonna be three, so.
Oh, we can, we can get the three, so.
Okay, guys.
Okay, we vote, we vote on the two, we vote on the two.
Hold on the two, now we're trying to get stuff around, let's go, let's keep going, everybody.
We vote on the two last.
Okay, what are we, what are we voting on, just two?
C P P or Bear, because they're the third places.
We're voting on who's gonna be number three, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and how, and how the system points?
Just one, cast one vote for who you want to be number three.
Oh, one vote, okay.
Okay, uh, Mister City Manager, can you just go around?
Now is that just one vote for the winner?
Correct, one vote for.
One.
Who want to be number three?
You wanna be number third? C P P or Bear?
I uh.
Okay. Alright guys, because uh. It was a nice chunky meeting, but it was uh, very efficient at the same time, we had a lot of things to discuss, so. Uh, congratulations, Councilmember colleagues.
Thank you Mister Mayor, congratulations to you too.
And this process was fair, it was just, and so, just. That uh, we think alike, that's what it's showing that we think alike on all these things. That's all it's showing. But, there has to be a tiebreaker, right?
I have received everyone's votes.
Tally please.
With three votes, we have C P P. And with two votes, we have Bear.
Okay, thank you, so, S C I, E J M A, and C P P. Thank you. Alright, uh, so we'll continue with the original plan, is discussing uh, uh, the final, the final three at which point?
Uh, uh, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, we need to, we need to give the staff a directive, especially to Greg and, and our interim city manager, uh, city attorney. Uh, we need to do a background check, you know, a, a call with the, with the other cities that these people have worked with. Uh, to give us some reference. Uh, so we need to, we need to vent them and see, you know, uh. All these three, all these three consultant firm, you know, we need to get some uh, background check, okay, and, and reference. So we need to come up with uh, what we want to ask the, the, the reference people, uh, with the cities that they worked. You know, uh, how the process was, how, you know, it was easing, you know, stuff, you know, if there was lawsuits, not lawsuits, so we need to find out all of that, okay?
I concur.
So any clarification, Greg or Robert?
Um, yes, so, um. We did do some preliminary ones of the five, but nothing too specific, I mean. Normally when we do backgrounds, no one puts a reference that's gonna provide bad information, so. We expect it to be positive, uh, but if there's anything specific you would like us to ask, uh, we can go ahead and do that.
We'll take it to a deeper level, take it to a deeper level, I mean, you know what types of things we're looking out for, I mean.
I need to call the cities, call the cities and find out how the process was. That, that, uh, you know, are they, they, they were efficient, or there was like challenge and, and how did they solve them? If there was uh, uh, you know, problems on the road, you know, how they, how they accomplished their goals that they said they were going to do, you know. So we need to know that. Go ahead, Miss Valentine, I know you, you, you're.
One final.
There, there's, I'm sorry, um.
Yeah, just one quick, quick, one quick thing, um, you know, I know that they've put down references, maybe, possibly, but. You know, just go ahead and uh, investigate what other s- uh, cities they've been working with, that's our investigation. You're doing that on behalf of us, so. You know, we wanna see the sore spots, we wanna see the sore spots in their operation, we wanna see their highlights too.
Yeah. The weakness, the strength.
So, please take a look and do your, do a deep dive in the last three and find out what cities they didn't report. And then just look at that too.
Yeah.
It's within our purview, that's what we want. I don't wanna be the one having to bring something here that I found out from any of these, that's, I want staff to do it, so it could be um, fair that way. Okay? Yep, that, that's what I'll do, alright, um, I think we're about to close up, but. Mayor Proton Valentine and Councilmember Reyes, go ahead.
Well, if we're going to be doing, I think we should do at least as extensive a background check as they would do if we were ha- if we have um. When, when we have uh, our commissioners. They, they're, the F, they do an FBI background check on commissioners, I think we should at least be doing that. So I think not only should we be doing a background check to talk, to find out. Um, their, their, their history in other cities, I think we need to do a background check to see if they have any criminal history in their backgrounds. So, um, at least as extensive a, a, a background check as they do. Um, for the, for the commissioners, and I know they do an FBI check, I think we should at least do that.
Uh, Mister, I, I suggest that uh, Mister uh, city uh. Uh, planner, you could involve the police department, not just, we're not just the one where you make the calls. But you can also get our police department to do its own investigation as well, please.
Sorry, are you?
Background check level, background check level.
But all, on the assigned staff or assigned team members of that particular organization or the organization as a whole?
Organization as a whole, individual members, yeah.
Yeah, the organization and the team members, yes.
Well, uh, you mean, uh, if we do a criminal background check, it's not gonna be on, on the name of the organization. It'll be the name of the owner or the representative.
That's fine.
Individuals as well, as many of the main, of the main uh, the primes. Okay, okay, uh, Councilmember Patterson?
Uh, yeah, one, I know some of these companies have hundreds of employees and team members, so I think that's uh. But two, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think this is customary, we don't usually do background checks on people that we issue contracts to. I am all for uh, finding out what their other clients' experiences have been. And some of these uh, contractors have worked with dozens and dozens of other cities. So I don't know which ones that we would choose, but I'm all for kind of checking out the reputation. But I think doing a background check on applicants for uh. For a contract, doesn't sound like something that we normally do, I think that's kind of.
Yeah, I, I will say that I've never done that, we, we check references. Um, usually during, when you're offered employment, you consent to a specialized type of a background check. So, maybe um, maybe that's something the city attorney's office can research also. Uh, whether we need their consent to do that type of a background on.
It's not customary.
You're act, you're actually asking, you're actually making, this is not just an ordinary contract. You're asking, you're asking for a contract where people are going to be involved with the finances of the city. So I don't see, I, I.
Background check for our auditors.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe we should.
Intimately, but nobody does, this is not customary, we have auditors that intimately have their fingers in our finances. And prepare our finances in conjunction with our finance department, and we don't, we don't do a background check on them, I think this is.
I, I have a solution.
Councilmember Montero.
Uh, what, what I would suggest is. Uh, because I know it's gonna be difficult to do, to do any FBI background checking individual people. Because you have a company that have four different consultants, uh, firm working in collaboration, right? So you could have like, David said a hundred people, but what I want is to, you can, you can check the organi- the consultant firm. But what I want is to, you can, you can check the organi, the consultant firm. You can check, for example, they have bankruptcy things or they have some litigation issues going on. That's the scope that you wanna see if the consultant firm has some type of uh, how many, you know, lawsuit they had in the past. How many, if they have, you know, filed back bankrupts or or or, you know, so those kind of things that you wanna check the organization is to see. How, if they are good citizens out there, basically, if the organization had done business in a good faith. And that's why I'm saying you need, we need to like uh Mister Vargas said, we need to contact some of the cities and maybe some other cities that they didn't put it on, on the uh, on the proposal. Uh to talk about the client to find out if their performance was what, the way they said it, they did. So and then maybe the final candidate, the final consultant firm, maybe then they're gonna tell us, okay, you guys gonna be working with these four individuals. Then maybe we can ask them if we wanna do background checks on those four individuals that are gonna go work with us.
I think that's ridiculous.
No, I'm just saying, it's just a suggestion.
I think is, I think absolutely find out what other clients' experiences have been. I think that's spectacular. See, you know, uh I mean, everybody who was in the top five are all more than competent to do the work. All of them have worked with multiple uh agencies, um multiple municipalities. I mean, finding out if they've been sued, sure. Finding out what other municipalities' experience of, of them, sure. We're doing a background check. Like, we don't do that type of stuff for our employees. Our directors don't go through that type of background check, which they should. Which they should, our director should, but our directors don't go through that kind of background check. But we're gonna have this consulting go through that kind of background check. I think that's ridiculous. Look, I think uh, yeah, I think we're kind of a, look, Greg. Greg, can you talk to police chief? You and the city attorney, just tell us what our limits are on this. Maybe at the next opportunity, maybe even tomorrow. Um if you could give us like a memo on that, we could just proceed. Um just tell us what our limits are and what's appropriate. Because I do, I do kind of still agree that the, the whole thing is about transparency, disclosure. I mean, there's things that they might not disclose, and we all, we all know that um, I don't wanna say controversial, this is very sensitive, you know. Uh marijuana dispensaries and licenses and consultants and the licenses. So we wanna see um what kind of experiences like the other cities have had. And if these, maybe we can find out if all they are is just a group that just funnels specific, specific cannabis uh district, uh dispensaries into cities. Um or maybe there's, there is some criminal things that we might find out. And that's not somebody I think I would like to have uh advising us, but. Can we do that, Mister City Attorney?
Okay, for clarification, I I, I'm hearing that uh we, we're not gonna run criminal background checks on the members of these organizations. Or are we, have we changed, decided to change that? Because. Um it actually, we would actually need the list of names of people to run background checks. We would probably need their consent as well. So in an organization, I I take it that these consultants are not just one particular person. So it would be difficult to run criminal background checks on these, on the uh organization. There wouldn't be anything on the organization. It may be lawsuits and bankruptcies or whatever that was suggested by council member Montero. But in terms of criminal background check, it would have to be individuals with their written consent.
Yeah, and and that's what I said, they know that uh maybe uh we should not do that right now for, because, because it's gonna be a tremendous process. Uh but maybe down the road, when we select the final consultant firm, then they're gonna say, we go, we, these four people is gonna go work with you. Then maybe we can ask them to give us permission to do that. But, but I said at this point, no.
I would, I would concede, I would concede that point. And 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 limited to, limited to the final sele, the, the final selectee. I think that's a good idea.
Anybody who will be handling cash should be fingerprinted. And uh but that's, that's it, anybody, cuz this is gonna be a cash. Every train are, are, are employees to handle cash.
Yeah, so, so, so I, I'm saying, I'm saying right now, don't do the background check on individuals. Just on the organization, on the consultant firm, and then the final. Candidate, candidate, because they already said there's gonna be specific people that's gonna work with us. Then we know who they are, and then they can give us the consents to, to fuck, to dig into their personal.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
Okay, so are we agree? I'm more emotion, Miss Valentine second.
We did.
I agree, concur.
I concur, so we concur.
Hey, go ahead.
So I, 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 I too wanna just make sure that I understand everything correctly. So we're gonna cross-reference. Um everything that they, the cannabis consultants have made mention, the cities they worked with.
Yeah.
Organizations they've worked with, the um implementation of cannabis programs in those cities that they've assisted with. Um advisories that they sit on, policies that they've drafted, all of that. Cross-referencing the cities, entities, departments, and those that they've worked with in those cities and agencies. Um that's very important, the cross-referencing, including any types of uh. I would, I would say any type of uh, it's really, really easy to see, work that they, they did uh where um. Initiatives were placed on the ballot that they helped.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, alright folks, thank you so much. Direction has been given. Uh, thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Uh, I am going to.
I think Greg wants to say something, Mister Mayor.
Greg, do you wanna say something or what?
I, I just wanna say that it will take some time because one of these consultants worked with thirty-four cities that they've identified. And so i- it's not gonna be a, a quick process if we go out early.
What I'm also telling, and I'm also telling you is if there's like some roadblocks and if the, the task is, you gotta let us know how the process is going too. Because we're real, we're realistic, we're not just, you know, stamping our foot, our foot down, telling you to do something. You gotta let us know what the process is. Consult with uh the, with the chief, consult with uh the city attorney, and then tell us, tell us where you're at at the next, at the earliest opportunity. Okay?
Okay, and 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 I think the other thing that you should think about Greg, instead of calling thirty cities, you can, you, you can come up with a number that's good, that, that, you're gonna call twelve cities. Okay, so so you don't need to come call thirty cities.
Okay.
Okay, so you have it like, like when you do reference, you, you sometimes, some, 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 you know, when you do individual reference, you do only check three people, right? But since this, maybe you can go up to twelve cities.
Okay, all information is good information, okay Greg?
Okay guys, um thank you all for being here. I am going to adjourn the meeting. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.